They may not have.
They may not have.
Well, my. I'm John. You go ahead of the times eleven. He is on Apple and lifetime lifetime resident. Businessman, charter member and past assistant chief of the Washington Heights Fire Department. Bob Thel, long time town resident and community volunteer. Was that my pet name just? I pledge allegiance.
It's gonna be nice. It's very prepared. To reach. One day. On the cup. Individually.
Thank you. But tonight we have public caring. On many certain sections of town call. Before we do that, we're going to do a recognition of Women History Month. Um, I have my horse step up and we're gonna introduce um the women that in the community who we have chosen to recognize. Um, in our community. So we're gonna step up and do this today. How's everyone doing tonight?
Great.
Good, good. So as a town, um, we've made it a yearly thing to um march, which is Women History Month, to recognize women in our community. You know, I was having a conversation earlier and, you know, none of us could be here without a woman.
Thanks, man.
Right? Um, all of us have brothers, sisters, aunts. Um, and it's very important for us, especially us men, to recognize the women who make our world better. And there are some women in our community that we need to recognize. We've been doing this for the last three years since I've been here. And we're gonna start with the first one. A passion for building a strong community makes her an invaluable asset as the head event organizer for New Century. Through her vision, Jane bridges eastern and western cultures. She fostered meaningful connections and promoting cultural understanding. A signature event, America the Beautiful Festival and the Moon Festival attracts nearly thirty thousand attendees each year. This brings people together in celebration of diversity and unity. Her dedication, grit, and creativity impacts our community, makes her a true inspiration. We are honored to celebrate her. Jean Penn, come on up.
Thank you so much. And it's a symbolizer and help walk our board members. Uh, I'm very, very uh, it's my great honor to receive this award. Actually, I'm very humbled to be recognized with the word. And um, like what you just said, so the years of effort, uh, so where I work, New Century, creating the great community events uh to uh break, build a bridge. Um, you know, uh, so that people in the community got a chance to know who we are, why we moved here, and what we're bringing to the community. Um, so actually, we are the ones to say thank you to Tom Walker for having us in their event, the community event in two thousand twenty four. So actually, we look forward to working with the town closely in two thousand twenty five and years to come. Um, so. Uh, and also my face, I mean, but well inspires me to do what I do and guides me to be a better person every day. And uh, uh, so we escaped from the broader persecution from communist China, so we cannot go back. So Orange County is our home, so we wanted to work here with everyone in the community to build a stronger, happier, safer, and a more prosperous community together. Again, thank you so much for the word.
And Miss Donna Reidy. For over thirty years, she has dedicated her career in the communities throughout New York, Connecticut, Connecticut, helping connect families with essential services and support. She joined the title Town Walker Boys and Girls Club as the director in December of two thousand fifteen, where she has been instrumental in expanding programs in enrich enriching the lives of local youth. She is an active member of the Walker East Rotary and serves as the BGCA Rule Network Steering Committee and is the Executive Secretary for the Eastern New York Area Council of the Board to Knows Club. And in two thousand twenty three, she was recognized as CEO of the Year by the Eastern New York Area Council, that's more than a week. But still good. A testimony of her exceptional leadership and impact. And most recently, in two thousand twenty five, she became a board member of the New York State Alliance of Boys and Girls Club. A passion about delivering delivering quality service to youth and families in the Hudson Valley, where she lives and works. A commitment continues to inspire and empower our next generation. This young lady is Lori Redburn.
I'll say a couple of words. Um, I just want to thank everybody for acknowledging me for this great award. It really is a word for all the other women in the room too, because when one of us is is recognized, all of us are recognized. So just thank the women in your life, and I just want to thank you all for this honor. Thanks.
The next honorary, the next honor. Oh, it's on. One, two. One, two. Our next honoree. She has over twenty five years of experience in the financial service industry. She has demonstrated exceptional leadership, managed complex situations, resolving challenges, and driving growth. Beyond her professional accomplishment, she is deeply committed to serving her community. She is a de- dedicated member and corporate secretary of the Board of Directors for Meals on Wheels of Rockland and an active member of the Walker East Rotary Club, where she continues to make a great impact. Her dedication, compassion makes her an aspiring role model, and we're proud to celebrate her. And she works for honor, respect, and trust. Damaris Filippo Delano.
I just want to thank the town and everyone for coming out today and um my fellow honorees. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to serve the community of Walk Hill and the members of Orange County. I thank you for this humbling experience and have a great year.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Our next honoree. Is a devoted leader of the Soul Purpose Church. She has compassion and faith that has made a lasting impact on the community. She's actively involved in the women ministry as well as the prayer, teaching, preaching, and worship. Her dedication extends beyond the church walls through her compassion through home and hospital visitation and the support of the marriage enrichment ministry. She offers guidance and hope to many. Her tireless commit commitment to spiritual leadership and her genuine care for others make her true inspiration. We are honored to celebrate her contribution. Frances Delissiano.
Thank you so much. Yes. I'm a preacher, so I wrote it. I wrote what I have to say because we'll be here a long time. Friends and esteemed guests, I am deeply honored and incredibly grateful to receive this acknowledgement during Women's History Month. It is truly humbling. This recognition isn't just for me, but for all the women who came before me, paving the way for future generations. I am profoundly grateful for the influential women inspiring me to reach for my dreams. And above all, I am most thankful to my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for his constant love, guidance, peace, peace, and strength. I share with you all my love for our Walk Hill community. And I look forward to serving it in any way I can, continuing to champion the power and potential of women everywhere. I sincerely and respectfully thank you for this great honor. God bless you all. Thank you. Thank you so much. God bless you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You took two?
Yes.
You may have two in there.
Oh, I'm thinking how.
We'll have to get that in the back.
That's right.
There you go. Our next honoree is an outstanding um success story as an entrepreneur. While working full time, she has demonstrated remarkable dedication by expanding her business version to event planning and coordination. Her vision, creativity made her an aspiring role model for young women striving to pursue and fulfill their dreams of having a full-time career and having a full-time business. Town of Walker recognized Maria Jeff Young Law.
Well, I want to thank everyone for this honor. Thank you for the time of Walker for giving me the opportunity to uh, share my inspiration with everyone and you will see all that inspiration on Facebook and all my design and I hope to continue in the future. And if you need me, I'm on unveildreams.com and thank you again.
My next honoree. She has public service and her desire to give back to our community started at a young age. She began the career as social work after college and worked for the state of Louisiana before getting married in nineteen ninety four to her husband Ron, who was an officer in the Navy. She took an active role in working with hundreds of spouses while the servicemen were deployed for over three years. Once she started a family, she stayed home and threw her suffers voluntarily. E T L girl stuff, baseball, swimming, religious education, just to name a few. Eventually, she went back to work as a substitute teacher before landing a job at Bosse's in the uh middle school and high school as a as a school social worker. In two thousand eleven, she was elected to the town board in Mount Hope and served six years before becoming the county legislator in two thousand eighteen, where she is currently serving. She currently also serves as a commissioner on the Human Rights Commission on Orange County Housing Task Force and on the breakfast bag uh coordinator for the warming station in downtown. But all that, the biggest joy comes from being a mother to four incredible kids. Do what you want with this. She is not only just a county legislator, she is a friend to the town of Walker. And she's been a partner with us in all our events, being there always. What can she do to help? Whenever I see them, what do you need? What can I do? Which to me is incredible. She's a beautiful role model for a young woman that she's expired. Um, engaging in political and elastic is mostly men, but she can have a tremendous job. And I count her as a friend and as a colleague, as an equal. With that being said, Jared Sumner.
Thank you so much to the town of Walk Hill for presenting me with this great honor tonight. It is humbling to stand next to all of these incredible women who are also here tonight to receive this award. We as women need to continue to surround ourselves with women who lift us up. I have an incredible tribe of women who, when they told me they were in the front row, I was like, goodness, they're here. And I love you all for that. I appreciate my son being here. I appreciate my husband. I see he just got here from Philadelphia. We can only be, I believe it was the pastor who said this, as good as the women are that we surround ourselves with, continue to lift one another up. Remember the women that have come behind us that helped us get here. Remember the women that stand beside us. Keep them beside you. And then the women who we have yet to come, our young girls in our communities, we need to continue to inspire them and to let them be who they are. Inspire them, encourage them to be who they want to be, so that we can continue to have this great world that uh we live in. So thank you so much.
And before we go, I believe uh Rob Sassen, county legislator, wants to say a couple of words and.
Mike, come on up.
Come on, Mike. Mike the dude.
What do I have, twenty minutes?
Oh, only half hour.
Twenty minutes?
Half hour.
You have as much time as you.
Michael, come on.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, uh, it's always a pleasure to be here in the town of Walk Hill. Uh, my fellow legislators, Janet Sutherland and Michael Puduk. If you know Janet, George said it best. I mean, I I had a I had a squeeze all this wording on this of all the things that Janet's done. Janet went to work today. Not an easy job. We had our first meeting for the housing task force. Janet was there and Janet is here tonight. And she's got to go home. Her husband just got home and she's going to go to work tomorrow. That's Janet Sutherland. So Janet, on behalf of the county legislature, Mike and I are here tonight for you. We'd like to present this distinguished service award for all you've done. Legislator, Chair of Rules. Member of the Human Rights Commission. Chair, former Chair of Human Services, former Chair of the Opiate Committee. Former Town of Mount Hope Councilman. Volunteer Coordinator for Middletown Warming Station. That's all I could fit on there. There's only so much room, but that's Janet. We love Janet. And congratulations to all the women. Truly a lot of role models in this room tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll have a public hearing notice, right? Madam Clerk?
Notice is here by giving the town of Wallkill a local law. A local law in the town of Wallkill. Check what's going on in the town code. Zoning and related chapters. Inclusive of updating and amending the town board. Who's doing that, but I'm not sure if she's pointing out yet five. Public code in town of Wallkill County Board. Please take further notice of the public hearing we held at the town of the town of Wallkill on March twenty seventh. Twenty twenty five and seven twenty five P M. Wallkill Town Hall is. The only town we're going to ignore anymore. To consider the adoption of the proposed introductory local law. Anyways, under the town of Wallkill, it's impacted the vote. Said introductory local law, so for the hearing, how should I do it? I don't know. At Wallkill Town Hall. The town of Wallkill, every ethnic community, we're very successful in pursuing these ones. Anyone who partners, study, what's this, it's ten more people coming in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I'll note, Mr. Supervisor, that the public hearing notice was posted and published and mailed in accordance with law. And. Perhaps you may want to go first, but just to indicate to the. Audience assembled and those listening that we won't be adopting anything tonight. If you want to do.
What's that?
You can go.
Okay. With respect, good evening, everyone. With respect to the. To the local law amending zoning code. The town has declared itself as lead agency under seeker. Those notices were sent out. The law was referred to the Orange County Planning Board and also over to the Town Planning Board. We still await comments from the Town Planning Board. We have received initial feedback from the Orange County Planning Department. For Mr. Sorenson. And some of the things we will be doing, there, there's going to be some changes to the laws as the committee has recommended additional changes. And also, we are going to run concurrently to make sure that the. Actual updates to the master plan are adopted before the local law is adopted. Because that's what the. The county appropriately has asked us to do. So this evening, of course, everyone is welcome to make their public comments. I believe. The members of our master plan committee or on the town board. Councilman Johnson and Councilman Vanilla have some. Updates to give on additional changes to the plan, which I'm sure they'll discuss. But tonight is an evening to open this public hearing, get initial comments from everyone. But all should rest assured that nothing is going to be adopted this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. So everyone knows, this is recommendation from the master plan committee. That was started about four, five years ago. They made recommendations, they changed them, they're here. So they wanted to have the public here to hear from the public. Going to our citizens and just to add that we will not be voting on any changes today. So we'll start the public hearing. You do come up. Come up to. Hold you. Say your name. And you will completely stay where you want. Open to anyone you want. Right up.
Thank you, everyone. I'm John Cappello. We're here in the law. I'm here actually this evening on behalf of two clients. The owners and members of the Greater Hokkale Unity Center who have a. Application for a cemetery in the town. That we are hoping is about to be approved at the April second Planning Board meeting and the Saddle Ridge. Developers. Who are the, have been developing and pursuing. An application and do have a secret declaration and conditional approval. For a two hundred seventy-three residential unit development. Insisting of a mix of. Rentals and condominiums, townhouse units. The, as far as the cemetery goes, you know, we've had our public hearings before the planning board. I would. Ask, ask the planning board, I think the sentiment of the few people who were there. To speak were in favor of the cemetery because they would rather see that though large lot. Residential zoning district, this will preserve. A field that has existed essentially the same character that has existed. For a while with a preservative perpetuity because. This particular organization does not use headstones, so it'll be lapstone, so it will. Be in character with the area. It will not have. Any of, well, you know, minor if at all impacts. On the area, the, like I said, the public. Sentiment was not in opposition, but in support. So we would hope that if anything, the board would include in your revisions to local law specific provision grandfathering. Those applications that have been through the secret process. We may well be approved, but I just want to put it in the record. And, you know, and let you know that this is a. You know, an application that was received, voted on unanimously by the planning board to adopt a negative declaration. Based upon recent evidence, so we would hope that will be allowed to move forward. On the Saddle Ridge development, I did submit a. A letter setting up some legal points. I submitted it yesterday. I'm not going to repeat it. You know, it's in the record, it's before the board. But what I would like to highlight to the board is. You know, in reading the county comments and their concerns regarding. The provisions of affordable and diverse housing. In your area, they specifically cited the land master case. Which I had cited in my letter, which I lived through. Think like another lifetime ago, but. At Hare then and. It probably was overweight time too, so I can't say I was scared of it. But. You know, it, it, what I think this development. And I would ask the board to consider as I think this could be the solution. To your problem or to your issue and addressing the county comments. Because it is something that has been vetted. Has been reviewed and the applicant has committed and is before your planning board for an extension. Has just recently, as today, submitted the updated traffic information. And is more than happy to meet with your board. And continue with the planning board during this deliberation process to. Hear any concerns and work with you to come up with something that can help you fulfill and meet that needs. In an area that had been examined and studied already. Rather than looking at new areas. So I would make that offer and I hope the board would consider it and we could work toward. A resolution that will make everybody happy and provide. Housing for young families for, you know, a different option for housing. At the town of Wallkill and this region really. So with that, I thank you for your time and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, supervisor, fellow town board members. My name is Richard Shepherd. Much like that, what exists in the town of Wallkill, I've grown up and I've lived in suburban neighborhoods my whole life. Over forty-five years, I spent my career primarily as a residential builder. And I was a New York State professional engineer. I have great respect for the governmental approval process and for bringing a building project to fruition. I am the major and one of the longtime investors in the Saddle Ridge property project. My goal has always been to build, I have to be built, first class, high quality development on the property. That will be an asset to the town of Wallkill and the Wallkill community. Something we could all be proud of. I worked diligently over the years to bring this type of development to Wallkill. And now with a well-known established national builder, I believe we can accomplish these goals. Existing zoning allows me to be built, a development in this vision. I worked in good faith and I've established. And established, established long-term commitment to the project. Changing the zoning laws now will take away all that I've worked to achieve, will not benefit the town. Because I have been and remain willing to work with the town on the proposed development. Please hold off on adopting new zoning. To give me more time, meet with the town, work on a mutual agreeable plan under the current zoning. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Pleasure. As you guys know, we've been working. For about two and a half or so years on this lot of time spent on trying to address the warehouses. That was a pretty big project to try and narrow the down towns we had so many before us, which instituted the moratorium. And that a lot of those kind of things kind of drove this to where we are today. The committee works pretty tirelessly. We have eight members on the committee. Lot of the things, because they come from various backgrounds that they would recognize and see. Some of the zone changes. Kind of preserve the character of the neighborhood. Nice thing about Wallkill is you can live on anything from a fifteen by a hundred foot lot. You know, to multiple, multiple acres. That's all offered here on our sixty-four square miles. So one of the things that's important is to preserve those. Zoning characteristics and quality of life so that option stays. For people in the future to come. As you know, this property that was mentioned tonight was rezoned in two thousand fourteen from R A to R one. So you build from the biggest lot. You know, it's required in the town to one smallest. And that needs water and sewer, obviously, because you can't have a well and septic in those smaller lots. Believe. You know, this is a project that's been kicking around since that zone change, two thousand fifteen, I believe, is when the approval. Additional final approval was granted and there's still no services, so. Certainly we want to work with everybody and do what we can, do our best for Wallkill. That's why we volunteer our time for that board. If I'm on this board, it's due to be a teacher as well. You know, because we care about the, the, the quality of life that we all appreciate living in Wallkill. So a lot of this is driven from that. Again, there's no voting tonight. This will be open, I believe, for several months. The hearing, the actual public hearing, when we presented all these was back in May. Of last year and it's still open. When people would submit. Concerns or questions or anything that they want us to address as a committee, we always try to address those and incorporate them into what we have of course today. You know, so it's a living, breathing document, so obviously it's going to change. Before anything was adopted, but again, it's. You know, it's a roadmap to try and preserve what we all appreciate. You know, coming home and living in Wallkill, choosing it for your. Place to raise your family and, you know, live out your life, so. That's what's driving all of this. At the same time, you know, we need to keep tactics in check. That's done through. Different revenues and it can't come at the expense of homeowners. It has to be driven by. You know, commercial development and so forth. So you have to put that in there. You know, mix it all up and try and get the best fit for all of it. So that's what's. Driving everything that's in this and, you know, obviously, like I said, it's several months before anything's closed, so you need to reach out to any of us on the board. Steven Vanilla and myself are both on the master plan review committee as well as members of the committee that are here tonight. You know, all listening to concerns and your councilmen and your supervisors will listen too. You know, try and work the best fit for everybody. So that's what we're doing. Thanks.
Thank you. Everybody else in the audience?
I'm Maple Road, I live in Warhol. And the.
What's your name?
My name is Lisa Low. Within forty-seven Maple Road. And just having all the new construction between the. The garbage company going up and down the road in the warehouse and down by Mud Mills Road. It's just. You know, it's, it's single family houses all along Maple's Road to have all this new congestion for school buses to be stopping with all these trucks. Going up and down the road at, you know, crazy speeds. We can't even walk across the road because we live on the turn. The cars just come flying down Maple's Road, all the cars, the trucks, it, you know, it does. You, you take your life in hand trying to get the mail. And it's just too, it's getting with that, it'll be way more congested, way more traffic. And it just hurts all the homeowners that are already there. Thank you for.
Thank you, Ms. Low. Appreciate it. Anybody else in the audience?
My name is Marion Zariski. I live at eleven Maple's Road. I'm right on the corner of Maple's Road, Highland Avenue Extension and Mud Mills Road. There is a very distinct. Sign that says, please do not block my driveway. And apparently people must have a reading problem because I have had to wait. Up to about ten minutes. For people to let me out of my driveway. This is without. The development that wants to come in. This is just general traffic. We have. Our tractor trailers, we have buses, we have school buses, we have cars. And to add to this insane kind of situation is adding insult to injury. So I hope when. The board. Considers. The plan. That they keep in mind. I've been here since nineteen sixty-five. There have been changes. And. Really, I think you need to think about the safety of the people. The topography of the general area. And just in general. What is going to happen with all of these cars and buses and. A sort of transportation coming in. It's really something to really, really ponder. And the other situation is I noticed that. The zoning change would go from R one to R A, which. I believe is agricultural. So I'm wondering, how could Saddle Ridge even be considered if it's an agricultural area? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Councilman Johnson had said that. Councilman Johnson had said that when our meetings are beginning of the month. First and third of Monday of uh, every month. We would love people to come down, sit in some of our meetings, give us other ideas. We're only as good. As the people we represent and we can't think of everything, to be absolutely honest. So if you have suggestions or ideas, please come down for those meetings. That would definitely help. Thank you.
And again, you don't have to come down. If you're busy, we get it. We're all busy. Send us an email. You can make a phone call. Um, you know, any way you want to give the information.
Anyone else?
Just to add um, what the other two councilmen have said, you know, so these meetings will stay open to the public. You can come in um, to, to the meetings and discuss. You can also send us emails, write us or call us. If you find something in a document that you want to address, um, we'll take those notes and bring it back to the master plan committee. Uh, we, we constantly hear uh, throughout the year, the number of warehouses going out to Orange County, not only. In, in the town of Walk Hill. And if you look at the document that we have um, available, you'll see that those. Those issues were addressed. We can't eliminate them, but we can certainly put them in the right spot where it. There is no impact to the residents of the, of the town, uh. Current residents and future residents. You want to put these place, these things in places where they can. Get onto the highway, get off the highway and not travel through the town on, in the roads. So take a look at the document. There's a lot of information there and, and give us your feedback and this will stay open for those.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with uh, Councilman Ballton there. The, the uh. Addressing the zoning for warehousing, I think the committee got it spot on. And uh, I hope, you know, we can move forward sometime soon to maybe close that chapter of the master plan. Um, and then, you know, whittle away as we, as we go on. But I, I think, you know, that. That recommendation is, is something I think you, you got the, the whole board support and, you know. I would think a large majority of, of residents of the town as well. So I think it was spot on.
Thank you. First, I would like to recognize and thank the master plan committee we have. Not only Councilman Johnson is not up here, we also have Carol Gannon. And I get you guys confused. Teek, I'm, I'm sorry. Teek here, we were supposed to have other members. They've done a tremendous job. Meeting these Mondays and putting all this together on their own, um, as volunteers and. Um, they've done a tremendous job. So I want to first uh, you know, thank them. Um, for the good work they've done for and benefit the town. I'm not going to beat this anymore. I think that um, town board spoke enough. Um, I think the main, main focus was the warehouses and where they should be. Um, you know, we had instituted a moratorium on warehouses so that um, the master plan. Maybe can look at where they should be in regards in the town because, you know, we, we don't want to be in the town of warehouses. So. Uh, I think they've done a great job in that respect. With that being said, anyone else, um, will speak to the public here.
I will note, Mr. Supervisor and Board, that the current extension of the more, the warehouse moratorium goes until May twenty-second. Because uh, clearly the code is not going to be updated before then. We will probably need to look to an additional extension of that moratorium. Should the board choose to do so.
Anyone on Zoom? Okay. Yeah, we're going to continue the public hearing, um, until next week, April twenty-seven. That's the next time, um, we'll be. All right, next we have public participation on. Is that ready and public participation on agenda items, three minutes, please come out with each name.
Good pleasure, counsel. My name is Franklin Donswether, eight twenty-six, Royal Wood Roads. I'm noticing on the resolutions today, eight-one, there's a resolution in front of the town board to eliminate the justice for the town. Um, as uh, we are already underway in election season, um, I know that I'm moved now. As I'm sure you do, uh, would no doubt create a lot of backlash and I'm sure. Issues legally for the town. So I'm looking for some clarification. I'm hopeful that you guys can uh, help me understand. That uh, you are looking to eliminate that town position for this election cycle or for the upcoming election cycle. I'll take my answer off. Mine. Um, also I noticed uh, in the resolution that you note. The town revenue from the court, uh, which is interesting to me, um. Because as I said, as supervisor seat a few years back, I had this very discussion uh, with the town board and with the judges in the town. Uh, about uh, court revenue and about uh, court capacity. Was made clear to me then, uh, that court capacity and court revenue do not equate. Uh, that while revenue may go up and down and uh, that the court is not in place for the revenue of the town. Court capacity uh, for this town was the cornerstone for the increase uh, of the third judge position that the state was so kind to allow. Um, so uh, I would just like the town to remember that court capacity and court revenue are two separate items. Uh, that this item is a thing that we all talked about uh, quite a few years ago. Uh, it's interesting to me that it's back up. It's certainly interesting to me that it's back up in the midst as election season kicks off. So uh. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Don Salado, two Circle Drive, Middle Towne, Scottish Town, part of town of Walco. I too very concerned about this issue with regard to eliminating. A judge's position and find it very unfortunate that a Republican judge is retiring and that's when. This board is deciding that the position should be eliminated. That it was held open for that individual, but now deemed less necessary. Very concerned also that the issue of revenue uh, has very little bearing, drug issues. Cases that come before the court that are domestic violence issues, D W I is even. So very, very concerned about this and urge the board to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jim Ward of Carolina M. I'm also concerned about the same. I've been looking through the budget and I noticed that we've appropriated an additional amount for the court's salaries. But then uh, now we're trying to um, you know, offset that with cutting judges. And, and I find that by doing that in our budgeting process would be one thing, but then do it in the middle of the election cycle is kind of uh. It's counterintuitive to that. So take that into consideration.
Appreciate, thank you.
Joanne Salado, two Circle Drive, Scotch Town. Uh, another thing that's kind of interesting. We're celebrating Women's Month, month, and now we have a female candidate, a strong candidate for this position. And I find it interesting that now you're looking to dissolve it, which would just leave two male. Judges as opposed to two male and a woman. So I think that is something that should be considered as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, being said, we move on to correspondence.
Clear pieces of correspondence received for the zoning public hearing. It will make those part of the record. And then we have um, another correspondence from Alter and Inselina, who were before Samra Court. Uh, they wanted to notify us that the gentleman plowing their development, unfortunately too many times. People love to call and complain. This is not one of those times. In fact, we would like to do the opposite. Every year this gentleman doesn't accept my belt plowing. Justice Willi saying it's not easy on our block, Samra. Residents, renters, containers, lady, they guard the cans and apples in the road. Being known that are stolen with the code the town has written. To say they do not care is an understatement. The sense of entitlement is disgusting. Even with this. Even with all of this, your employees still take pride in his drought. Does an amazing job. Our block will never be. A second cleanup because of a job well done the first time, especially in this winter. Our gratitude is this email to is not enough. Unfortunately, we do not know his name. Nonetheless, we would like to send our thanks to him. We believe that he is a great asset to your crew and our town and maybe he's not already able to give it. And that is Oscar and end of the over that for Samra Court.
Sorry. Now we go into resolutions.
Resolution, the town will tell Walco to renew the third town justice position. Whereas in twenty fourteen, the town would recognize a need for a third town justice to assist with the bad logs of tickets and cases in the town justice board. And whereas in accordance with the proceedings initiated by the town supervisor in office at the time, in June ninth, twenty fourteen. The New York City Assembly passed bill number eight nine four four three and the New York Senate passed companion bill number S. Seven four seven nine, ending town law section formula one by adding a new paragraph P, borderizing the town board. Of the town of Walco to a voucher resolution, subject to permission of the referendum creating the third justice position. And whereas the assembly bill was signed into our form of, the form of order in the form of August eleventh, twenty fourteen. And whereas by resolution, the union law adopted on August twentieth, twenty fourteen, the town board created the third town justice position. Which position was filled as of January one, twenty fifteen. And whereas total revenue in the year twenty fifteen, the town of Walco Justice Board was approximately three million, six hundred thousand dollars. With the town share of saying being approximately one million, seven hundred thousand dollars. And whereas in the year twenty twenty-three, the total revenue of the town justice board was approximately one million, four hundred thousand of the town share. Of saying being approximately seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And whereas in the year twenty twenty-four, the total revenue of the justice board was approximately one million, three hundred thousand dollars of the town share. Being approximately seven hundred and seven thousand dollars. And whereas in the year twenty twenty, building laws were passed by the state legislature, legislature affecting the total workload of the local courts. And whereas central is criminal, the way it's are now being utilized countywide, reducing the number of days that the town justices. On, I'm sorry, town justices have been on call to twelve days in a town in a year. And whereas the current salary for town bulk of justice is fifty-one thousand, seventy-three dollars and ten cents. And whereas current town court, sorry, whereas benefits cost approximately forty-five thousand dollars per year for justice. Which is a stable medical insurance condition. And whereas current, current town court justice Joseph A O and has announced his intention. Do not seek reelection when his current term expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And whereas is the opinion of the town board that it's no longer necessary or false effective. To maintain a third town court justice position at the town court. Now therefore, it's hereby resolved that the town court justice position presently being occupied. By Justice Joseph A O and be eliminated on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, eleven fifty-nine P M. And further resolved that this resolution is adopted, subject to permission referendum and that the town court is elected to uphold. And post the notice of adoption of this resolution in accordance with the article seven of town law. And it's further resolved that no petition shall have been filed within the time specified for a referendum. Thereon, this resolution shall take effect without further notice. Any motion?
So moved. Second, our discussion. One, I completely oppose this right now. We have not had any of the judges come and talk to us, if this is a good or bad thing. The judges I have talked to, this is a horrible idea. Since bail reform. Your workload has quadrupled. You may not see it in revenues because a lot of the cases don't have revenue. Completely against this. You have cases, drug cases, domestic violence, theft from stores. These are things that. Do not generate revenue for the town that go before these judges. Not to even mention tenant leases when you have tenant arguments. Our judges should have, the ones that we have now, should have an opinion of what goes forward, not just us. They're the ones that have to handle that, that workload. I've personally seen that workload increase with the reform. From simple three pieces of paper as a cop to over twenty when I turn something in. And that's just the beginning. Shame on us for even thinking this right now. This is no different than. This is no different than going ahead and saying, let's police. Because that's what you're effectively doing. You're tying your hands on your judges that they cannot do their job.
So. Obviously, um, how the way the vote goes here, there's going to be, there's going to be always comments, people like it, don't like it. Um, at the end of the day, we as elected officials have to do what is best for the town. And its residents and its taxpayers.
Then let's have the town speak.
Let me, I didn't interrupt.
Let him speak. I want to interrupt you.
So you have to look at the numbers. You have to look at what we're doing for the town. Do we have a service that is needed, say EMS ambulance? And do we have an opportunity to fund that? Do we have, um. Things that, that have. Come up that, you know, years ago, we only had two judges. By the, by the state law. The town is required to have two town justices. Um, it's unfortunate and they've talked about this for the longest time when, when there was the talk about. Um, the current judge not running again. Now you could, you could postpone this and, and do it next year based on the budget and the budget. The numbers are not going to change. They're going to keep reducing, but next year will impact the current two judges that we have. That will probably more than likely want to run for reelection. This year you have a judge that's not running for reelection. And, and unfortunately, I, I see the two people here that are interested in the seat and so they, they will be obviously impacted. But at the end of the day, we have to look at what the town needs and what the town is, is best off in service. That's all.
Thank you.
If, if you would permit, I would like to say something. I know I'm a little late and I apologize. Um, I think everybody up here knows who I am. I'm Peter Green. I'm one of the town judges currently. I apologize for just kind of interrupting, but. Not really what to do when I'm late. Am I permitted to speak?
Yes.
So I, I came here, I, I'll be late. I apologize there with that concert for my children. So. I'm, I'm here and I'm going to tell you I'm against it. Um, I understand that the, the resolution that is written. Includes that the revenue is down. I'm sure it is. That's not something to do with the court. And, and our operations. That's something to do generally with the state of New York and how they have tied our hands. In collecting money, right? Like they, what they've done, um, is basically make so people that are. Convicted of illegal traffic violations are not required to pay anymore in order to keep their license. That was a big source of revenues for the town. Now, we are not a revenue generating entity. Now, we are not a revenue generating entity, right? The Supreme Court has said the courts are not to be revenue generating. They are not to be a net positive for the town. It's not our job, nor can it be, right? Like we are not to be impacted by or not bringing in enough money to, to cover ourselves, to, to make money for the town. That's not something that we can be concerned with. It's only about what's right for the people. So if fines are lower, if fines are higher, it's based on that particular case. It's not based on what can we do to crank up revenue for the town? It can't be, right? That will be improper for any of us to do that. So is revenue down? Yeah. Is, is there a way for us to possibly up it? Yeah. But what is that at the expense of people that have traffic violations? At the expense of people that are there that don't have the funds to pay generally, right? We have people that are convicted, peddling, they, um, that don't have the money. There are people that are there stealing, like Mr. Vanilla said. And that's not a money generating thing. We have people that come in having stolen a hundred dollars worth of groceries just to make ends meet. That's not someone that we can hit with a huge fine, nor would we. It's not right. So we're not going to be able to generate the town X amount of money that you're looking for to cover our position, whatever other revenue you're looking for. We, we don't have the means or the ability to do that legally. So if funds are down, if revenue is down, I'm sorry, that doesn't mean that we should be saddled with more work at the court, right? We're talking about bail reform, criminal justice reform. That's what's been written in the resolution that we say um, as a justification for why we have less work. It's actually more work, right? We have so much more to do with reviewing the discovery certifications that the judges are much more involved in. The, the bail, Mr. Vanilla mentioned, it's right, right? There's a lot more that goes into any determination on bail, on anything. So the workload has exponentially increased. Um, it's not something that we can say we need fewer judges, right? We're making do with what we have, but I don't think it's appropriate to cut what we have. Um, I, I think that it is something that I've seen kind of over and over with, with what's going on the last several years here in the town, where our court is not being funded properly. We've gone from 10 full-time clerks plus two part-timers down to what? Six full-timers and no part-timers permitted? So they're still making it work with what they have down there. And that's that budget, what we're talking about, that's gone down how much in the last couple of years? Just based on court staff, not even talking about judges. So I, I'd like to see more money for the court, the court staff. I don't think it's appropriate to cut judge, judge positions unless anything else. I think that we need the resources so that we can continue doing what we, what we have to do for the town to deal with whatever arrests that the police make in a timely fashion. People deserve the right to have their cases heard and adjudicated quickly. And that's what having three judges is about. The people have a resolution to their case quickly. And that was why, um, there was a third judge spot head, everybody recalls, years ago. There was a huge delay in people getting their fines assessed and people having, actually having court dates. Court dates were pushed back about a year or more on traffic cases just because of how many cases we have in the town. So I'm against it. I oppose the, the application. That, all right. Thank you.
Your Honor, I do have a question. I do have a question. In 2013, when the state created this and then became part of our town in 2015, was there any resolution that when they created this to help get rid of town judge or only just for creation?
Uh, my understanding is it's only for creation, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
Actually, I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure, sure.
So, um, how many days a month do you hold court?
So I am there, it, it kind of depends on how you calculate it. I am there every week on Wednesday all day.
So four days a month?
Four full days. Um, yes, which generally most court in every other town would count that as eight days, right? Because it's half days is how they do it. So it's eight like that, eight calendars plus more.
For the two other judges?
I can't speak to that. I can tell you generally they are not in court quite as often as I am.
I do know that.
And I can say, I, I don't think there's any dispute about that. Maybe I get that.
But my, my point of this is, you know, with four days a month, right? Um, with our busiest judge, probably less than four days a month with our other ones. Is this something that, I mean, if it needs more work and there's more paperwork and there's more stuff to do, wouldn't there be more days you have to be at work to do that? So if you're still working the same number of days from, you know, when we were really busy and fines do kind of go hand in hand in revenue with the number of court cases. Yes, there's a difference because some of them don't have a monetary component, but the busyness and the amount of caseload, and if you look at those, those are down too. So the amount of caseloads, not just fines and fees, but work from when we added the third judge to now has definitely decreased, which was what we discussed. It's not just about the finances only. Um, you know, we're still trying to be fiscally responsible to the taxpayers to have, you know? Um, I don't think anybody's ever said it's been too long for me to get into the court. And I think that, you know, during COVID, there was a lot of plea by mail that was done that was successful for smaller things like traffic tickets, like you mentioned and stuff, which could still be pleaded by mail, right, just to expedite those as well. I know other towns do that.
Some do. That's obviously not preferred. Most people would prefer to come. And also that doesn't really, it doesn't save that much time, to be quite honest. It's actually in some ways more work for the clerical staff.
But I'm looking at it more like for the residents. They don't have to take a day off of work. And I don't believe anybody has court after four o'clock or on Saturdays or anything. It's always during the day.
Right. No, we don't have court on Saturdays.
So everybody has to take off. There's no more night court. You know, we used to have, there was a night court once a month or.
Sure. And, and the court staff is not permitted to do overtime. So, you know, our, our hands are tied on that too.
Right. But I mean, there's another way to do that. Like if you work, you know, three hours one night or four hours one night, then, you know, during the day, you're not going to be there if there's no court going on. Then, you know, that's, that's, it's flexible times.
Sure. And, and, and I, I understand that. But also at the same time, I've gotten emails from administration about why I don't have court staff there from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM. People are out at different times for, for vacation or whatever else, you know, taking personal time in the morning. I'm not sure. But I've gotten questions directed to me about why I don't have my court staff there from 9:00 AM, 5:00 PM every day. Um, so in that respect, I can't even do that, right? Because I'm getting questions why, why they're not there for those specific hours. So I don't think that would work.
Yeah. You know, I just feel that you can renegotiate your work. I would account for that question wouldn't be driven because, you know, they would know that that person's working a different set of hours that week or something. Certainly.
And with the staff that we have, honestly, we can't, right? We have not that many people. If we have somebody who's out sick, which we've had a couple of times, we're at two or three people out. Um, somebody who got a free scheduled vacation, you know, suddenly we're down to what? Two people that are working at the court. It, it doesn't work where we can now shift people around without having it so that there's nobody to answer phones, nobody to, to open the court, to, to have somebody come in and drop paperwork off or to get paperwork. But it just doesn't really work that way with the amount of staffing we have.
So do that.
Definitely. Okay. Any other questions yet?
Not good then.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question. Judge? Nope. Chief, just a, sorry for putting you on the spot, but are us upwards down from here? Can you hear me? I hear you. Okay.
Year over year for the past several years, we've seen increases. This year we're down. I think the cold spell in February reduced the level of larceny we were seeing for some reason. We're not so sure with an operation, but they're trending back upwards again now as the long weather is coming. So overall, if you're probably a bad example of.
But overall for last year.
Yeah, last year was dramatic.
And how's the larceny task force doing?
The larcenies are on the uptick again. Um, I just bet with Galabria three weeks ago, and we're putting the larceny task force back into effect because we've seen our numbers, um, jumping up over the past three weeks.
And how are our traffic agents doing?
There's plenty of work for them. They're busy. They're writing law summonses.
Thank you, Chief.
So just, just, um, Steve, just to answer, based on the report that the chief had given me earlier, the arrests for 2025 are down 17% over the 2024. Parking summonses are down 60% versus from 2024.
But we're basing everything off of 2024.
2024 to 2025. I just started to go back to 2023, but just if you ask.
Seems like to me everything's not done. Maybe just go for those years. Thank you. Anyone else?
Person that's for, you're asking in public?
Yes. Got three minutes. Say your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Constantine, the chair of the Orange County Democratic Committee. I'm sure there's a Republican Democratic committee member or two here. This is not a partisan issue. This is an issue of faith in public trust. Fiscal responsibility is a cheap and shallow excuse for this resolution at best. And I've seen nothing like it in the time that I have been in these public spaces. Your economic development failures, the consequences of those failures, and your revenue generation failures is your problem, not the problem of our courts. Because it's not been their job and it has never been their job to be a revenue generating entity. That's at best, at best, the excuse that you're putting forward. The far more sinister and political justification of this resolution is the fact that we are essentially, in effect, canceling a lawfully scheduled and publicly noticed election that is sent to both political parties. Both political parties get to find out all of the offices that need to be filled every year, and you sent that information to the Board of Elections when you reorganized this board at the start of the year. Then both entities, both political entities, sent out volunteers and members and talked to voters for the last six weeks about the fact that they would get to participate in the democratic process of electing a judge. Many of them have signed petitions. I would argue that potentially thousands of your constituents have signed petitions for candidates that are entitled to seek a position, not to mention you now have a sitting judge talking about the need for more bandwidth and resources in our court system. You have the police chief talking about rising crime statistics under your leadership, under this board's leadership. Thank you so much, Councilman Vanilla, for calling out some of these statistics that if you actually cared about the outcomes, you would be working to increase the bandwidth in our court system, not take cheap political shots in an election year the first time this particular seat has become vacant. Have your actions and your efforts aligned with your stated values, like keeping this community safe. And as you've mentioned many times, revenue generation and fiscal responsibility. This is not only fiscally irresponsible, it is one of the grossest violations of public trust that I have seen ever in politics, ever. I raised over here from New Windsor when I found about, out about this happening tonight. Because this is absolutely so disingenuous and disgusting, regardless of what political party you belong to, because there's a candidate of both parties that I'm aware of seeking this position. You should be absolutely outraged by the tangible day-to-day impacts of this and also what it means broadly for our democracy. Shame on anyone who votes for this resolution. Seriously.
Matter of fact, do you want to go?
Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
I would be abstaining, seeing, I see the views on both sides, the spectrum, and I'm going to abstain at this point.
Mr. Vanilla?
Outstandingly, no.
Mr. Johnson?
Um. How would you assess?
Supervisor Simone?
Yes. Next one?
Resolution, the town will welcome the board in for, and they're all this year, to the permission of senior water and wastewater plant treatment operator in the town of Public Works. Whereas they're from face on the performance and development, civil service and renovation, four town employees are entitled to be reclassified from provisional to permanent senior water and wastewater treatment plant operators in the town of Public Works. Whereas the employees, Stephen Berry, Thomas Foster, Luke Mortensen, William Owen II, are at, are underwashed, followed by a reclassification, but reclassified eventually. Now therefore, being hereby resolved, the town will, the town board thereby makes the following permanent appointments to the town department of public works set to sell this listed below at the date of March 20, 2025. The right and all appropriate documentation is submitted and accepted by the local county or human resources civil service department. Stephen Berry, 4194 Howard, Thomas Foster, 4194 Rowan, Luke Mortensen, 4194 Rowan, and William Owen II, 4194 Rowan, Mary Morton.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Vanilla?
No, since we need to save money somewhere.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Simone?
Yes.
Resolution, the town will, the town will authorize the town supervisor to enter, enter instantly bus operator service contract between Orange County and the town of Public to provide certain transportation operating assistance for the town of Public to dial this program. Resolved, the town will, the town will authorize the town supervisor to execute on behalf of the town bus operator service contract with Orange County for the town of Public to dial this program, ranging from April 1st, 2025 through March 31st, 2023, subject to the U.S. legal limits of the final version, while be agreed by the town to have the motion.
So.
Second.
Mr. Corin?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Vanilla?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes, ma'am.
Supervisor Simone?
Yes.
That's all.
Yeah. Next, we got a councilman's comments. We'll start with a, a well-respected councilman, Mark Corin.
All right. I'll start with highways always. Highway Department has been working on tree trimming and removal throughout the town. Trimming is being done according to the paving list. We do this to eliminate any obstructions the dump truck may face as they dump into the pavement. Tree removals are being done on its as-needed basis. We're mainly focusing on dead or dying ash trees. Most of our dead and dying ash trees can be found in wards one and four. We are also filling potholes with coal patch, um, as we find them or they get reported. Potholes are difficult this time of year due to the refreezing of water at night, which usually pushes the coal patch back out of the pothole. We are having an issue on Cottage Street and Mud Mills currently. We think the footing drain on the railroad trestle may be plugged up and creating the water to surface under the tunnel, uh, on the road and keeps pushing out the coal patch. We may have to put some under drainage in the under, under the tunnel this summer. Uh, we'll be talking to Doug Gell about creating a milling schedule and discussing paving options. We may start enrolling meadows and we'll have to work with the residents there to have their vehicles parked in the driveway so it can build everything in a timely manner. We only have a few basins left to repair and rolling meadows that coincide with our paving list. In the last two weeks, we have had ditching crews out. They've completed several areas that become problem over winter. Stony Ford Road goes to Turnpike, Prosperous Valley Road. Um, and we're currently working on Powell's Turnpike where we're changing a few metal cross, uh, culverts and ditching. Just a reminder, bulk pickup right around the corner. First ward is first this year. As you know, we, uh, we alternate. Last year was Ward 4321. This year's 1234. So again, starting April 27th, that's the first ward. Uh, May 4th is the second, May 3rd is the third, and the fourth ward is May 18th. Uh, please remember, all calls as has an entire week to pick up your items. If they don't finish your road in the same day, they'll usually start there the next day where they left off. Schedule is on the town website. Uh, also a reminder, yard waste can be brought to the Highway Barn at 17M starting April 5th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM. This will be available every Saturday through the spring, summer, and fall. Um, one thing, guys, I remember last year, we had discussed maybe extending those hours because some people work during, on Saturday and may, you know, get out early, what have you. But let's, let's talk about that. As of now, it's 8:00 to 12:00 PM. Um, and just a reminder, my comments, um, Little League Great, April 12th. I don't have the time, but usually it's nine o'clock lineup and ten o'clock. I got that right then?
Line up at 10:00, step off at 10:30.
Okay, so line up at 10:00, step off at 10:30. Okay, so line up at ten, step off at ten thirty. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Valentine.
Thank you Supervisor. For the police. Currently, we have fifty-four full-time sole police officers. As mentioned before, arrest records for 2025 total of one seventy-seven, which represent seventeen percent decrease versus twenty twenty-four. And parking summonses were down sixty percent, three oh four for twenty twenty-five versus seven seventy-one for twenty twenty-four. The next town police community council meeting will be held Thursday, April 3rd, and will be held at the Town of Walco Community Center. Police youth coalition meeting is scheduled for April fifteenth, and that starts at seven PM. Some of the evaluations of the department and goals and objectives for 2024 into 2025 and 2024, we established five goals and objectives for the year. The following is an evaluation of the degree to which we have attained those goals and objectives. First one was to acquire a drone for department use in January of 2024. Drone was acquired, three members received training and obtained a license. On September 11th, 2024, Policy Six Oh Five Settlement Unbanned Aerial System was issued. Subsequently, the drone has been deployed successfully. This program's success justifies conserving, expanding the program to include additional drones or, and all pilots. The second one was to acquire a kennel for the humane safekeeping of stray and covered dogs in compliance with the New York State Ag and Market laws. The climate-controlled kennel was acquired in March of 2025 and became operational April 2030. I'm sorry, April 23rd of 2024. Subsequently, the stray and abandoned dogs have been regularly housed on temporary basis in the kennel before being returned to their owner or transferred to a long-term shelter. Previously, on July 29, 2022, Policy Four Four Point Eight entitled Animal Control Governing Among Other Things Empowerment and has been adopted. On March 12, 2025, a new policy, Eight Oh Six, entitled Animal Control Governing Recent Amendments, was drafted and will be released in the near future. Hiring a full-time records clerk to oversee the storage and retention, retention of department records. That happened on January 23rd and the adoption of new software, which is called LexiBoo. The acquisition of software related to policy and management-related training. On June 24th, 2024, we began, we began our engagement with LexiBoo, a vendor that provides public safety and management software. Niche RMS, the acquisition of Records Management System to document cases, manage investigations, track arrests and warrants, as well as enhance the agency's reporting capabilities. During the 2024, Orange County began the implementation of the NIC, Niche RMS Countywide System. A Sergeant Wrigley attends the meetings with the vendor and other municipal representatives as well. The implementation of new organization chart. The current organization chart did not accurately define the general responsibilities of the department's supervision members. Consequently, the command staff, in conjunction with the town board and the department supervisors, began to a review of the organization chart under Policy Two Hundred, entitled Organization Structure and Responsibilities. Implementation of new organization chart carries over from 2024 into 2025. Niche RMS Implement Records Management System acquired Total Station, then trained officers in the use, acquired firearms training simulator and design and implementation of Reimagined School Resource Officer Program, which would be a replacement, as you know, as Dare Program. For our Parks Department, this month, the Parks Department has been very busy outdoors, working on spring cleanups. We've been cleaning on all of the properties of downed trees, limb sticks, snowplow damage, ruts, stone, and any leaves that fell due to the winter weather. All of our preventive maintenance of our equipment is complete, and we are planning to start mowing in a week. Or two, tennis courts, nets have been set up back out in Circleville Park along with pickleball courts, nets at Circleville and Stevens Avenue Park. Like to remind the public that rollerblading, skating, or scooters and hockey are not permitted on tennis or pickleball courts. They are damaging to the painted surface. The park staff is almost complete with degrading projects surrounding the perimeter of the new playground structure at Circleville Park. This should be open mid-late April. Picking tables, benches, and the volleyball net at Circleville Park is scheduled to be set up out of this, out for this season, this coming week. Little League has started practicing on our fields. Soccer games are starting very soon as well. The routine maintenance of those game fields will soon be a daily task. Our Clean Suites Program will start back up on Monday, March 30, 31, where we welcome back Miguel and Roger who pick up roadside trash along the roads within the town of Walco. Aside from the work detail, I'm happy to announce that we have hired two new full-time employees to our Parks Department team, Hal and Travis. They are a great benefit to the crew, which they will enable us to expand our efforts in improving our parks. Lastly, I would like to remind the public that unauthorized vehicles are not permitted within Circleville Park. Please observe our signs and leave all vehicles in the designated parking areas. Pets are not permitted anywhere in our parks, only within the dog park located in Circleville Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vanilla.
Good evening, and thank you everybody for coming tonight. Let's start off with her apartment property. Just recently came back from the hospital, spent the whole week there, was finally able to make it to the second floor. Did ask us to make a, a meeting with us in two weeks, the thirty minutes. I told him I'll get back in touch with him for that. Also has a clogged drain on the second floor. He just noticed it today. I just got that message from here today. So, he just finally was able to make that flight of steps up. Then, ninety-four-year-old man was kind enough to donate twenty-six acres of his property to the town, building art center, I thought he was supposed to do. Still hasn't been done yet, but I'm sure we have a good reason for that. Let's see, what else? Trune, Trune Management, that's the people that do our golf course. We're currently in contract with them, we're on negotiations. We're gonna see how that turns out. See if they're gonna stay with us, or we're gonna go ahead and find someone new. The golf course has had a soft opening. I believe it's April 1st. Is there actual first day of, of full course for everybody? Go out there, play some golf. It's a beautiful course. You can actually link it to your phone. All I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Vanilla. Councilman Johnson.
Thank you Supervisor. So I'll start with the Building Department. For the month of February, there was a hundred and twenty-nine permits certificates issued. We were a hundred and three. The whole piece collected a hundred and three thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars. Rest thirty-nine complaints carried out seven hundred and sixty-eight inspections in water and sewer. There were several water main service leaks that were identified this month. Some of the service leaks are actually on the residential side of people's property, so those repairs will be carried out by their homeowners contractors. The two water main leaks are minor, and they're still trying to be identified at this time through evaluation and pinpoint exact location, so the appropriate repairs can be made on those. And a great job is always by our employees there and for the residents for their understanding. Fire hydrant replacements will be starting in the next week or so. But probably will be on hold until they finish the fire hydrant flushing, which is gonna actually happen in April fourteenth to the twenty-seventh. That's everybody's favorite, if you have town water. That information's gonna be posted on the town website. And as always, you know, it's possible to experience some discolored water if they're flushing hydrogen in your neighborhood, but it should clear up quite quickly. The water meter upgrade that you've heard me mention before is scheduled to start in the next few weeks. However, it's gonna be commercial properties first, residential following. Keep in mind, all properties will need the access to change out those meters to the more smart meters where they can collect the information remotely. The work on the well rehabilitation project that we're doing on the Kowski Lane is continuing now that the weather is, you know, not quite as cold and nasty as it was. Access the well location for the vehicles. This is actually quite important to do, is remember, pay attention to the comments we addressed in tri. The total trihalomethanes and haliocyanic five acids, which are the chlorination byproducts that we have in the water, have been corrected, and by addressing this at the groundwater level, it will help remove the organics before they can get into our treatment system. So it's certainly something that, you know, needs to be. The wastewater treatment plant upgrades, though both settling tanks are done, we have a few parts that we're waiting for the pumps to come in. And once they're in, that project will be done, which has been a long time coming, but, you know, well needed. The storage tanks, we've been rehabilitating those to address the fluorine byproducts, as you mentioned. Now we're doing the tower drive tanks. They should probably be done by the middle of summer, so that's good for that one. And as always, that department is, you know, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year for the water and sewer treatment, so great job by all to make that happen.
Comments?
Well, I want to say congratulations to the whole award recipients here tonight. It's very powerful to, you know, respect and appreciate them for what they do for the community. We have the bulk pickup. You heard Councilman Corin mention. Ward boards lack this year, usually flip it, goes one, then four, then four, then one. So I just say that because people see other boards starting to put their stuff out, and they put it out early, and it just kinda doesn't look very nice to have that stuff piled by the side of your road for a month or two. So, for Ward Board, it's Sunday, May 18th. So please don't put items out before that and that whole week. And honestly, as they pick up, they usually get a little behind. So we might even see it the week after the eighteenth, too, if the Ward Board cleaned up. But please don't put it out until that evening. And we have first day trout season, right, April 1st. Come and saw your fishermen, get out there and enjoy the shawang, the kill that we're trying so hard to preserve. Catch some trout. And I just wanna say, you know, my thoughts and prayers go to the Threm family and the Holtzapple family. Both of those individuals were family friends. Lenny Holtzapple actually took my parents, one of their first dates in his convertible, like sixty-eight years ago. They went out with Lenny and Dee and ended up, you know, becoming married and doing what they did, so. Just wanna say how horrible it was for that to occur, and know that he's been married to Dee for over sixty-five years. Great people, work for people, farmers. He had his own excavation business. He would give the shirt office back to anybody, so just great people. Bob Threm, also, he worked in Orange Rock with my father for over forty-three years. Just really quality people, so I just wanna throw my prayers out there to the family. And on that, we do have a happy Easter, I want to say, Passover. But we'll do that holiday before we meet again, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. First, I want to congratulate all the Women's History recipients today. The recognition is, our pilot program, the Speed Hunch, will start on the April 1st. VPW will go out and start putting the ones that were taken up. As you've seen, I believe we have six or seven new ones, and we're going to have some new ones put out this, this season, and see how that works and see to extend the program. Our Town of Walco seniors, they meet on Thursday. If you'd like to go, you need to contact Rosemary Mesa, eight four five six nine two six six two seven. They asked any seniors who go arrive at Level Forty-Five. They ask for a two-dollar cover to cover tea, coffee, and baked goods, and once a month they cover pizza. They play bingo, the cards are a dollar. They have three bus trips, day trips per year. They want everybody to come out and have a good time. Our Easter egg hunt is scheduled for April 19, 2025, in partnership with Dogwood Acres. We're gonna have it at Dogwood Acres, and I'm looking forward to having them been up there. We set it up, and it's gonna be a good day for kids to go out there, collect the Easter egg, meet the Easter bunny, and meet the animals they got up there. All types of events that are gonna take place just besides riding the Easter eggs. Then our birthday, we're gonna do everything a little different this year. Usually, we go out, we pick a spot, each ward, and clean up. However, our Clean Street Program has been so successful cleaning up around the town, and we decided to do a little, something a little different this year. We're going to encare and beautify our parks. We're gonna look to beautify the Town of Walco Memorial Park, Circleville Park, and Town Hall. So if anyone is interested, we'll be planting flowers, planting trees around these public areas. Please, let me people come out, ten AM, and we're gonna be at Walco Memorial Park to go from there. So hopefully everyone can come out. We are also looking to hire a dial-bus driver, a full-time driver. They have, you know anyone who has a CBL? Please contact Jen at eight four five six nine two seven eight five two. Our dial-bus program has been expanding every year, and this year we have two new buses, so they want to do two new routes. So, you know anyone who needs a job and has a CBL, please come on out. Comments? And I want to wish everyone a happy Easter and a happy Passover. You know, soon, a lot of the schools are gonna be out for spring break. Please be careful as you're driving the road. The weather's gonna start getting better. Kids are gonna be out. Please be careful. With that, some part.
Thank you. I just wanted to give my own little bit of Women's History Month tonight. Historically and age-wise, I think I'm the oldest girl left here. I start my thirty-ninth year in October. But I want to talk about my friend tonight, who was recently appointed as the Deputy Commissioner of Public Works. Some of us were kind of hoping that she would make history and become the first, I think probably in Orange County, women, woman Commissioner of Public Works. But my friend Michelle Baker, who behind me has been here twenty-nine years, and probably knows more about the Town of Walco than pretty much anybody in this room. She is an amazing woman. She started as a secretary in the Highway Department twenty-nine years ago, and she's worked under several commissioners. And like I said, we were, we were hopeful, but it, it didn't work out that way, and that's okay. The board did appoint a gentleman, Mr. Darling, as the new commissioner. I believe he starts in about ten days, and we are all looking forward to helping him. He's a young man. He was a young leader. As I said, we're looking forward to helping him. But I just thought that maybe next year in March, we seem to have a, a good portion of our employees are women. And I talk about this a lot, and, and I try to, have everybody's back today. We had a walkout for Detective Denali after seventeen years. And I haven't been in the court office in a long time, and Derek Paul now gave me a nice compliment, so I was happy about that. But I think maybe we could think about that for next year, and just maybe honor some of the women who come here. I know in Town Hall, there's just a handful of gentlemen. And people like Michelle, I mean, she really, she, she gives one hundred and twenty-five percent of things every day. So maybe next year we can think about, knowing some of the ladies that worked with us here again. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Corin. Before we go to Chief, one thing I want to put out there is that on this weekend, Deezos of New York will be in town. And we know what happened last time when they were here. We'll be notified. We will have police officers out. We know about it. Hopefully, you know, the fairgrounds, you know, will give us the right number and will have whatever they need in regards to emergency responders they need onsite. So, just wanna let that, Deezos of New York is this weekend from twelve PM to ten PM. Chief?
Thank you, Supervisor. I'm so glad the research got a microphone, because both of the microphone might damn base at home without my stimulating comments on the research going on in town. Eric did a good job touching on the goals for 2025. You know, this is objective criteria. We don't always try to really select these goals. These goals are the things we see that will provide best service for the town. Of the five goals, although we were talking about 2025, two of them are most important, I think.
Of the five goals, although we were talking about twenty twenty five, two of them are most important. I think. One is this acquisition of firearms training simulator, you know, nationally every year, unfortunately, police officers are engaged in incidents where they use deadly physical force. And it may not have been necessary. It happens every single year, training, training, training. Our goal here is to make sure our police do a great job every day. And what we do is we're going to have this firearm training simulator, which is police and fuel lenses, the apple lenses, the glasses you wear. It's three D virtual. We did demonstrating with the vendor. We're going to find those national incidents that went bad where someone maybe did not have to be shot. You know, wouldn't happen in that situation and our goal that the officers learn from that. Um, it, it, it gives our officers a different perspective on things. Until the unfortunate happens in your ears, we're not going to learn from it. So. The county has a system that we're using for years called firearm training simulator. It was a three D screen. This one much more sophisticated, three D. And what we're going to do is if we did it past, the county brought this as well, but anybody members of the community, the county members went years ago. And with the new system, we're spot with them, obviously like the officials. We want people to see in the channel that we face every day on patrol, how does the other departments of emergency service, so we need to buy into this. And the second thing is without going into much detail, we've been planning all the programs and a dead strategy that runs successful. If you can all defer into our offices and the programs themselves are great and there, we need to do something more. The children in school, you know, have a police officer in sixth school every single day. Need to find a way to help reduce the most serious threats that are happening, you know, on a regular basis. Schools have a great job. We just want to pitch in a little bit, so we're designing a program while the county and the council are doing that probably next month. We have one of our officers being recognized coming up. It's Mason DeLazio. Mason's a great young officer. He's already here as a dispatcher. In his yearbook, he said he wants to be a police chief. I'm pointing at him. It was my job, but thankfully he's just a police officer. He has three exams to go until he catches up with me and then we can go through those. That'll be my job. Mason's a great young officer, being recognized on April third, February tenth, August eighth, and then on April thirtieth, which is going to be all the year, be recognized by the local district. Mason does a great job, is a wonderful man and a great career, but not get my job yet. But we just touched on Detective Christopher Snappley. Chris was a great, great man. I'm sorry to see him go. Great personality. Got along with, with so many people in our town. Was a real motivating factor, second bureau and was involved in some of the most serious investigation, including five homicide years ago. And one that is leading investigation involving a brutal, brutal murder of a very young child. And Chris did a great job as the detective. We're certainly going to miss him, wish him great success in his future endeavors. And lastly, the supervisor mentioned the Diesel's of New York. So when this event became a problem for our residents and emergency responders last year, there was so much traffic issues, mechanics down. I noticed that the community was an issue, was lacking because we weren't aware it was going to be such a big event. We've worked with the playgrounds and said they'd be great to pass you these diesel events they had. They had extra, I was out there, I know, they had extra parking staff on, on hand. And they made sure the traffic flowed the roadway as quickly as possible. They assured us the same thing is going to happen this year. We do the detailed working, all the shifts on Saturday to make sure. That the traffic does flow smoothly and we're going to stop with notification by the way that tonight, I encourage and through our social media outlets to make sure the public's aware. So your president or your business, new business in town, Saturday, as supervisor mentioned, maybe a little early between eleven and nine o'clock at night. Avoiding mechanics in that area where we're brought reportedly, maybe don't take East Main Street, use the back. But we'll certainly give the message out starting later tonight and more through the day tomorrow. If anyone in the public aware of potential traffic congestion and everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Sheriff Mike.
Yeah, we have public participation. Any minutes?
Good day, the D Mark Lane. I have in the past year knocked on thousands of doors in this community and I've listened to hundreds of people. And I seriously doubt that the sixty thousand dollars we're going to save for that town justice position is going to register with our residents as good for the town of Walk Hill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this board has just fully canceled a lawfully scheduled election that has been.
Sorry, could you give us your name, please?
Yes, I'm Zach Constantine. This board has just fully canceled a lawfully scheduled election that has been publicly noticed. Let's talk about the price tag of your incompetence and cronyism. It can actually cost upwards of fifty thousand dollars at least to hold a random special election like the one we'll need to undo this mess, likely more in a town of this size. You are putting the responsibility and the cost of preserving our democratic institutions on the voters who trust you to uphold their public services. Let's add to the corruption bill, shall we? I'm probably going to sue you over this. I know that my legal fees will be covered. Other people can do the same thing. Who's covering yours? Where's the camera? You. The taxpayers will cover the bill for this transactional political performance as these people fight to take your voice away. So what now? Maybe there's a special election over whether or not to even have an election that's already underway. Now, right now, when there's already so much distrust in our government, in our courts, when there's so much fear over the rise of authoritarianism in this country, you have met this moment. By canceling an election to paper over your incompetence, you strip the public of a judge under the facade of fiscal responsibility when. Clearly crime is up and a sitting judge came here today to talk about how he needs more help. It's because maybe it's an open seat, right? With a Republican incumbent who happens to be retiring this year. Let me remind the public, these people can cancel one twenty twenty five election, but they can't cancel theirs. They're all on the ballot this year, this fall in November. Remember who voted to gut a public service for their own political agenda. Have the night you deserve. Thank you.
We remember, uh, members of the board, my name is Michael Morse, Assistant Chief of Silver Lake Fire Department. I'm here representing all seven town fire departments that protect this town. The other five departments mentioned herein that are located and operate within the town of Walk Hill are joined to compose this letter. Request. These departments include Bloomingburg Fire Department, Circleville Fire Department, Howell's Fire Department, Mechanics Town Fire Department, Wocatello Fire Department. Silver Lake Fire Department and the Washington Heights Fire Department. This request is for information regarding the town of Walk Hill's Office of Emergency Management, also known as Town of Walk Hill O E M. Under the co-direction of Lou and Gracia, the Town of Walk Hill O E M had a great working relationship with every fire department in this town. Since the retirement of Lou on December thirty first, there has been no information provided indicating a successor or movement. Showing a plan of action for a successor to be appointed by the town to co-direct our O E M. It is imperative that the fire departments of the town of Walk Hill and the emergency medical service of the town of Walk Hill have information about the status of our O E M and who is leading them. If an incident were to occur within the town that warrants the activation of O E M. We would like to know who we are to call, who is going to make the decisions. Who is the leader? Are there multiple leaders? Is there one leader? This working relationship and emergency planning is vital, ensuring the safety of our community and those who serve and protect it. Signed, all chiefs of the departments in the town. We'll follow with a few questions that you can answer if you choose, do so choose. Who is in charge of O E M? Does the town have that plan to replace the former co-director? If so, what are the requirements and minimum qualifications? And is there a timeframe for this to be completed? Will town and EMS and fire department agencies be involved with canvassing for someone to be that successor? On a side note, representing the Silver Lake Fire Department, so I don't speak for any other six departments. A member of this town board recently stated to members of the town and to a committee. That Lou and Gracia. You are not worth paying twelve thousand dollars a year to sit around and wait for the fire whistle to go off. If that's how this town board feels about O E M, we have a major issue in our town. We don't sit around and wait for whistles to go off or to, for alarms to come in. We prepare, we train, we pre-plan. That's the only way we can provide a valuable service to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mike, just, Mike, just, just.
Don't wait till. I'm going to let people talk, but I can, I can answer.
Mike, everything you guys do is, is greatly appreciated from the town and on down across the entire town with its residents. If you remember during when, when Mr. Gracia was here, they, they shared that O E M with the chief and, and. Mr. Gracia, that has not changed. Chief is still in there with Joe Andre and so, no, I'm just. So what I would ask is that you, you contact the chief and if there's, there's a lack of communication, so hopefully the chief can follow up and, and get that straightened out. And then, you know, we can follow up on the other questions as far as timeframe and everything else. Thank you.
Every fourth Monday, at a different fire department.
I would think after twenty three, seventy years, he knows how many times he. Oh, maybe he does.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. That's not necessary.
Okay, Mr. Down to that.
Thank you. I believe that this is an open forum and I. I believe this is an open forum.
Yeah, but Frank, I'm going to stand up and interrupt you. The fire department, we bust their ass every day.
Oh, I know.
And he's talking about something. You interrupted him. We're here to protect you and the people in the district.
I am sorry, Commissioner. I am sorry.
Right. You should have jumped in. He should know after twenty three. We know a lot of things, but we don't.
I understand.
Right. Don't interrupt us. We're, we're trying to solve a problem for our town.
I totally understand. I could not agree with you more because I worked with Lou and Gracia closely. And I will tell you that Lou and Gracia is exactly what you think he is. He is a great, great man. And the vacancy left by him, by this council speaks volumes. The council that tells you that they care about the community, but they can't give you an O E M director. The council that tells you that it cares about the community and it got the crime in the community can't give you a judge. I'd like to thank the council. I'd like to thank the council very, very much specifically, Mr. Ellington. Because it's. Mind-boggling to me, mind-boggling. That this council can have the hypocrisy that it has. And be disrespectful to the community that quite literally stands in danger's way over and over and over again. With two individuals on this council that had badges. It's a, it's a travesty and I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed. You need to do better. Need to do better for these guys. And again, I'm sorry for stepping on toes here, but I am telling you right now, the level of disrespect that this council shows for its community is astounding. And it really needs to stop. So you can do away with an election. That's fine. Good luck with that. But good luck in November because this stuff, this doesn't get forgotten. Not by these firefighters, not by the police, not by the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would ask that it's a, we're all aware that it's a political election year and don't use our firefighters, our community to politicize your, your agenda, please.
So. This is interesting to sit up here and try to use our firefighters. There's a concern from our firefighters. And last I checked, there was, there was a director of O E M, which is the police chief and a coroner. And I believe when something happens, we are ready. I a hundred percent truly trust Joe Andre. So I, I, I hear it that we do not trust our O E M. No, no, I don't, I don't want to go back and forth. Um, if you want to have a meeting about this, I'd be more than happy, but I believe. We have a O E M director with the police chief who was an O E M director before there was a co-director. And we have a coroner who does a tremendous job in emergencies. And I hope everyone in who's here from the firefighters do believe that. If there's something else going on, be more than happy to meet with you guys. But I don't want to make this a political, it's not political. Public safety, someone's going to tell me because I have a badge and I don't know. Come on, stop. Okay? I'm a man who wanted to cut these officers the way we are now. We need to stop that and we need to move on. If there's an issue here regarding to O E M, we'll sit down and talk about it, but I believe we are prepared in case there is an emergency. Next.
Council, Circle Drive. I think that there was not sufficient public notice about tonight's vote that ring before the board that has. Left the legacy of poisoning the town with the same national disgrace of politicizing the judiciary. Effectively shortchanging the democratic process by attempting to cancel a judicial election rather than risk losing.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone on Zoom? Chuck, come on up.
Hi, Deborah Fornell, Avadi Road. I know you guys know my goat issue. I believe they're throwing feces now out in the backyard.
Throwing what?
Throwing goat shit. So that's becoming an issue because the goats inside the house. So I think that's what they're doing. So. I'd like somebody to look into this, try to get this goat out. Thank you.
Thank you. Response to that, Will.
We're in a board, there's a police coordinator.
I, we're in court next month for that.
No, but it's been years now, so.
There are, there are reasons for that, unfortunately, that are beyond the town's control.
It's just not allowing it now, but I, I don't know. It smells awful back there. I had her come over to look and, and it was just.
We're trying and I'll, I'll speak to the building department and see if we can get something in there for that, but we are in court next week. It, it has been.
Years.
Stumbling blocks, stumbling blocks, and they, they, they got a lawyer and everything else. We can talk about it after.
Yeah, I thought, I thought the goat was gone.
It was, which one?
An ongoing pursuit.
Okay, I would definitely.
The back door already smells like a farm now.
All right, we will have someone out there and check that out. So we're right now looking at our legal laws when it deals with animal control, looking to revise some of those laws. All the things we're looking. Anything else? Anyone else?
Need to have an attorney clerk in.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Executive?
No, it's attorney clerk.
Okay.
Which we can do after we adjourn.
Okay. That being said, thanks everyone for coming out. Appreciate it.